Town Council is now in session. Would you please stand and join me for a moment of silence? Councilman Webb, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Ms. Lillard.
Here.
Mr. Shiro.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
All right, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? Hearing none, we will move to the continuity in government. Soon as I find it. Okay, this meeting of the town council is being held pursuant to the April 13th, 2020 ordinance for continuity in the government of Luray. The town clerks shall read the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronically present. The town manager is responsible for receiving public comment in advance of the meeting, which may be submitted by mail, email, phone, or hand delivery by 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. In-person attendance and comment by the public is also permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order and phasing guidelines issued by Governor Northam. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page, and a recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the town council. Consent agenda, council?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the filing consent agenda, including the minutes of the regular council meeting on March 8th, 2021, minutes of the work session on March 23rd, 2020, 2021, financial statements ending March 31st, 2021, and accounts payable totaling $184,480.48.
So moved.
Second, let a second sit. Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Ms. Lillard.
Yes.
Mr. Shiro.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Okay, nobody signed up for citizen comments? I'm sorry? You have one? Okay, sorry, Steve. Go ahead, Mr. Webb, or Mr. Burke, please, go ahead. Well, I didn't read it, if you want.
The online, the town did receive a comment from Katie Bowles, 400 Council Boulevard Department 8th in Los Angeles, California. I'm reaching out to request an update on the council's Confederate statues in Luray. The last update I'm aware of was that the town was having issues with ownership but planned to continue maintaining them in the meantime. I'd love to hear about any progress that's been made on this issue. Thanks so much. I did respond to Ms. Bowles, and then she requested that the comment be written to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. All right, we're honored to welcome the Stanley Police Department here this evening. Chief Dean, welcome. Do you mind the podium, please? Thank you.
I know how these meetings go, so I promise I won't take up a very, very short amount of your time. Mayor Dolph Meyer, council, certainly appreciate you guys letting me come and speak tonight. You know, we've been through a lot the last couple of weeks, as you guys know, and, you know, if our small towns, if we don't stick together and things like that, then we don't make it. You know, that's just the way it is. And that's sort of why I'm here, is to thank you guys, and especially thank Chief Cook for everything they've done for us, and the things that I didn't know that he was doing for us. I found out later. You know, I think that, of course, it was a terrible thing, but some positives did come of it, you know. Even starting the day, the day of, myself and Bo was side by side up there, and we sort of leaned on each other. And I needed that at the time, and I'm not speaking for him, but I think he did too. You know, you got, I don't know if you guys know it, but myself and Bo had the two longest, the full-time continuous, were the two longest-serving guys in Page County.
Is that right?
So, you know, I definitely needed it up there, and needed today, called him today for advice, you know. And I don't know, I apologize, I don't remember who else was up there that day. The days afterwards, the police department did, Luray Police Department did things for us. Like I said, I didn't know, had no idea what they was doing. Some of the things, I was worried about how it was gonna get done. And Bo would call me and say, hey, I did this, I did this, or Corey did that. And it meant a lot, because the first 12 to 14 days was something that I just can't explain. We was busy the whole entire time doing something. And some things, I'll be honest with you, I just didn't want to do, didn't know if I had it in me to do at that time. Some of the things coming from our officer's vehicle, personal and otherwise, Luray, the police department took care of it for us. The state brought it here, and Bo kept it for us. Said, no hurry, whenever you feel like it, whenever you think you can, come get it. And that's what we did. Unfortunately, some people don't have the same compassion, and once things done immediately, instead of giving us time to process what all had happened. So, I mean, I just can't, I can't thank the police department enough. And you guys, the night with, I'm not sure, I can't remember who I went with this Friday night, to take our brother to Manassas, but we'd all been working 12, 14 hours that day, at least. The next night, when we brought him back, I mean, you guys, if y'all was here, I know it's turmoil and chaos here, but you could have never told it. It was truly something to see that night, you know. I don't know, it disrupted the town, but never heard anybody complain about it, you know, citizens or otherwise. The day of the funeral, I don't know how it got, how all that got organized. I truly don't. When we came, when we came in, there's things done that I come by, I'm like, who did that? You know, who took care of all this? Because we didn't, we didn't know, like I said, we was dealing with other aspects of what happened. But it's a true testimony to the leaders involved, it took care of, you need, of course, Dow and Chief Cook. You know, when we went to New York, there were some guys that I hadn't been around a whole lot, you know, whether it's from Luray or Shenandoah or wherever, but there was a bond made there that I can't, I can't explain it. We was only up there a day, but there was a bond between us guys and ladies that I wish everybody could have went just to, just to see and feel that, something I've never experienced in my life, to where, you know, some of the guys you weren't as close with, all of a sudden, you know, you're best friends. You're leaning on his shoulder crying, or he's leaning on your shoulder crying about, you know, about whatever. And I don't want to take up much time, I just want you guys to know how much we appreciate it, a lot of things you probably don't know about, you know, that the police department has did for us. And I couldn't even begin to sit here and put a number on what has been done or that, because a lot of it, like I said, I'm still finding out things that Bo did that he didn't want any credit for. You know what I'm saying? He just, he just did it, knowing that we wasn't capable of doing it at the time, you know. So, the only thing, I'll leave you guys with this, not that any, nothing that day would have made a difference, nothing. Everything was done 100% right. But I think if one thing, it's opened our eyes to, you know, I know everybody needs manpower, everybody needs more money, but the training and the equipment, I think it's opened everybody's eyes, I've talked to, as, well, we may have been slacking in this area, but we're not slacking anymore, here's what we're gonna do, type of thing. So, that, I'll leave you guys with that, I could sit there and talk all night, but I know you guys have other things to do, but I just truly, from my heart, I appreciate each and every one of you, and I thank you guys.
Chief, we certainly thank you for coming. We can only imagine the agony your department has gone through. We hope we were able to provide some level of comfort during that time, of course, to the Winham family and your department and the whole community. I mean, we're Stanley and Luray, we're one community as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir.
But thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Counsel, anybody else?
No. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Before we continue, I've been remiss in not recognizing the mayor of Stanley with us tonight, so Mayor Knight, welcome, nice to have you. Certainly, would you mind?
I'd just like to echo what Chief Dean stated as far as how much we appreciate the support that we get from our local communities, you guys especially. I wasn't with the chief when we went to take Officer Winham to Manassas, but he did invite me to go and pick him up, and the support, not just here, but from here, all the way down and all the way back, was just something that I have never seen in my lifetime, the support from the first responders, and not just, and not just first responders or law enforcement. We were coming back through, I think it was Compton, and I mean, even through Front Royal, it looked like there was a parade going on, and I don't know, I honestly don't know who was crying more, him or me. And I mean, it was a sad time, but it was also a proud time to see not just our local community, but more or less like statewide, come together in support of a united cause. And we were coming through Compton, and you could see just a very dim light, and when we got up to where the headlight shone, there was an older gentleman, looked like he was maybe late 60s, early 70s, and he had a small American flag, an old ball cap, looked like he'd had for several years, and he was out there by himself waving the flag as we came by. So, I mean, just, just the feeling inside of how proud that made me feel was just immense. And there again, I want to thank you guys for the amount of support that y'all gave us, you gave the chief, and hopefully, if there's anything that the town of Stanley can do for you guys, all I can do is say, just ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Okay, Luray Downtown Initiative, Ms. Elliott.
You want me to follow, Dan?
Well, that's tough. Is this your first?
This is.
Okay, well, welcome.
The inaugural.
Well, there we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, and Lady Councilwoman. It's good to be here. I've got just a couple of things real quick. I want to thank Brian and Morgan for giving us a tour the other day of Creekside Commons. I think if you've all been paying attention, it's coming along nicely. I'm really excited. I think it's gonna be just a really nice addition to downtown. We wrapped up the deadline for the second round of facade grants was March 31st. We will be having a meeting on the April 19th at 11:00 to go review them and then make our selections on those as well. And other than that, just working on some grants, some of the different grant things that I'm with the county, trying to get the money into the downtown merchants. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Elliott, thank you.
You're welcome.
That wasn't hard at all, was it?
No.
You're on my 2022 calendar, you will get your page, sir, I'll leave you in.
He's on a calendar? What kind of calendar is that?
Mr. Ray's coming back? Yes!
Okay, the Luray Hawksville Greenway Foundation, Jim Davis.
Thank you.
Jim, welcome to have you tonight.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Could we have your name and address for our records, Jimmy?
I'll be glad to give it to you. Who'd I address myself to? Jim Davis, and I'm at 3 Jamison Road, Luray 22835. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. Like, I'm Jim Davis, and I'm proud to be back home. This is my home. I was born and raised here, and I was gone for about 30 years, and I'm honored to be here before the town council of my beloved town of Luray. And I'm also now, I'm proud to say, a member of the Hawksville Greenway Committee, and so I'd like to tell you about some of the things that we've been working on. Firstly, we've been meeting regularly every month to try to move the good of the Greenway forward. And on April 19th, Mr. Josh Hawn, who is the Page County Coordinator for, I'm probably gonna get this wrong, the geographic...
Information system.
Thank you, Jerry. The Geographic Information System. He's going along with Ms. Tara Meadows, who's a high school teacher at Luray High School. They're going to be mapping all the memorial gifts on the Greenway. That's the benches, the tables, the shrubbery, the trees. So it's gonna be really, a really conclusive mapping of all of these things. And then I understand here, at the council offices, there are recordings on paper of memorial gifts from times past, and also one of our old-time members, or members who's been on the Greenway Committee for a long time, might be a better way to say it, she's got a lot of records for these memorial gifts. So these young students will have the advantage of learning more about this mapping system with Mr. Hawn, then they'll come here, under supervision of Jen Jenkins and others, and collate what they found out in the field, together with what is a written record, so that we will really have, for the first time in a good while, a really comprehensive record of all the gifts that people so generously donated to make the Greenway the beautiful place that it is. As my friend Bill Dudley says, it's the living room of, it's the outdoor living room of Luray, and it really is truly a beautiful place. And if I might add, it's something that's so visible, I told Mr. Mayor, Jerry Dolph Meyer, that I was so thrilled about the beauty of the three wonderful recreational facilities that we have, a town of 4,000 people, and we have an outstanding Greenway hiking trail, we have a beautiful recreational facility at Ralph Dean Park for everyone, and then you have exquisite Lake Arrowhead, which I took with my grandson this summer and walked around the perimeter. We've just got it great in that regard here in Luray. It's something that we can all be proud of together. But I'll really be happy when we get everything mapped, and I'm gonna tell you why. Once we get everything mapped, we'll create a spreadsheet of what's been done on the mapping. From that, we hope to solicit, or not solicit, that might not be the best word for it, get in contact with the previous donors who established these memorial gifts and say, hey, we appreciate what you did to begin with, the wood's wearing away, you know, they're over 10 years old or so, and they're just wearing out, and would you like to donate to help replace and repair these benches and tables? And we're gonna offer two levels, you can do it at wood, and it's gonna last eight, 10 years, and that's your cost, or we can come back with the Trex boards, and that's a 20-year term, and that, of course, costs more. And then for those people who might not be able at this time, or just don't feel like they can contribute, and those name boards that are on all the benches start to wear away, we're hoping we can create some kind of book of remembrances or a memorial book or wall somewhere to all those people who so generously donated in the past, so that they too won't be forgotten. So, that's project one, and we're gonna do that in phases, you can't do it all at once, so we'll divide it and triage it out, working with Ms. Jenkins at Parks and Rec, so that we're getting the worst benches done first. And she's already been doing that, y'all have been doing a great job moving forward with that, but we're hopeful over this, it's gonna take probably a year at least to get this all done, to get it collated, and then to start requesting donations and start getting some cash flowing in. But hopefully, it will help if it's successful, if this campaign is successful, it'll reduce cash outlays to the town of Luray. And this is something that I was talking with a couple of the guys, we walk every morning, we call ourselves the Hoopers, you'll see seven or eight of us out there at 7:30 in the morning, going down the Greenway for our good health and exercise, and for society. And I thought, well, why can't we have a QR code? And I am a moron when it comes to computers, I can barely cut my phone on. They finally made me get a smartphone, I had to give up my flip phone. I was so sad to have to give up my flip phone. But anyway, these little QR placards, you already have the Trex post at all the exercise stations, and there's 20 or so exercise stations throughout the length of the Greenway. And we're thinking, I was thinking, well, gee, if we put a QR code placard up there, that's not that expensive, and you could, number one, tell our guests and also our citizens more about that exercise device. And you could also put levels of proficiency on there, so that they'd say, hey, I hit it once, I know more about it now, I can move up in proficiency. So when you're educated about something, it becomes more useful. So perhaps by having that QR code with information on those exercise machines or devices, people can become more proficient and enjoy them more, and that creates a good feeling, I'm sure. The other thing that it could do is we could solicit donations from, you click on the QR code, are you enjoying the Greenway, isn't this beautiful? Would you like to make a donation? I'm sure it can be carefully written up, we have a good team, we could do it in consult with Jen Jenkins and bring it to the council if need be, but we'd like to be able to have on that QR code the ability for our guests that come to town to visit, along with people just going along the Greenway, and they click on that thing, and they're feeling a generous spot, like we all do, you know, you get that generous feeling, and you say, hey, it's time to let go of a couple bucks and help this cause out. So I'm hoping that that will also be put in to the encoding of the QR placard. And finally, we have so much to offer here in Luray and Page County. It's just tremendous what a gem of beauty we have, natural, fine people, great vistas, you have the South Fork of the Shenandoah, you have one of the most beautiful portals to the Skyline Drive at Thornton Gap, and you have this wonderful, small town with neighborly feelings for wherever you go. So we could have also on that QR code, a link to the Luray Chamber of Commerce, a link to anything in Luray Page County that would be invitational to our guests when they're on the Greenway. So I think that that would be another very positive thing, you just hold your smartphone, I don't know how it works. Jen Jenkins had one and showed it to me, and I was amazed. But we have a website already at the Greenway, the Greenway Committee has a website, they maintain, so, you know, you could hit the QR code, it could link onto the website, and it could carry you to as many places as we would program into that website. So that's project two, to get the QR code placards up on those Trex boards that are already, you know, extant in existence. And finally, we all like, everybody likes to talk about the future, everybody has dreams, I have dreams, they make me happy, they make you happy. And I know that in the past, I got back to town full-time, November of 2019, and I really wasn't that attuned to what had been going on at the Greenway. I started walking with some of the guys, but I understand that there was a push to extend the Greenway from Oscar Sowers's up Linden Avenue and on out to Ralph Dean Park, and I understand some barriers and difficulties we're running into with that routing. So being aware of that, but not being aware of the intimate details of it, still, I was talking again with my buddy Bill, we were the only two guys walking Saturday, and we started putting our heads together, and if you'll think about it, the Greenway comes to the Highway 340 Bridge, and then there's the railroad trestle above the Highway 340 Bridge. You can exit the Greenway at that point and get on the sidewalk at Virginia Avenue and walk in an easterly direction up Virginia Avenue, cross the street at the train station, now you're on Zirkel Avenue, walk out, and you're going, you're going by the Luray Chamber of Commerce, Train Station Museum, and also all the wonderful information that's contained by the knowledgeable staff that's inside that building. So that would become a real important focal point, I would think, for people visiting the town of Luray and walking on the Greenway. Anyway, you could go on out, Zirkel to Cave, make a right turn on Amos Avenue, go down Amos, swing a 45, now you're on Luray Avenue, and that sidewalk, as best I recall, ends about at the Luray Elementary School, Luray Middle School. So what we could think about, and we'll certainly work with you, we don't have that level of funding to put in a sidewalk from Ralph Dean Park to the Luray Elementary School, but that would complete a wonderful route and be a wonderful addition, and you wouldn't have to worry about ADA compliance, getting up the hill at Linden, which is gonna be tough, I mean, that's a steep hill. So that might be a way to connect Ralph Dean Park to the Greenway, and just have a wonderful channel for people being able to go by that Chamber of Commerce building. And the final thing I'd like to share with you is a dream I have, and I love history, and I'll be, I'm about done, but I have a dream that one day we'll see the Greenway also go northbound to Jaeger Springs, which is a lovely spring, it's in an artisanal well? I don't know, the water there is just, it's blue like that cup. It's just amazing, and it's on, think the town, do you own the town, do we own, do we own? We own it, you already own it, we own it, it's ours. So it would be something to construct that, but from a historical standpoint, up there where that spring is, is really where the town of Luray got its start, because an ironworker from Pennsylvania named Dirk Pennybacher came down here about 1795, and he started making, had a furnace there, and they fired, they made iron ore. And he fashioned, he made stoves, just like Ben Franklin's stoves, and he made backplates for fireplaces. So it's a very historical spot, and the whole valley up through the 1870s, 1880s was involved in iron making, so it'd be a really historical spot that could be interpreted. It's a place of natural beauty, and it's very tranquil and quiet out there. So, in closing, thank you very much for your time tonight, I sincerely appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Ms. Jen Jenkins, who has come to every one of our meetings since I've been on board for the last two or three months, she has been invaluable help, provided invaluable help to us. And I'd also like to thank all the volunteers that I serve with on the Hawksville Greenway Committee for the excellent job they do. And I'd like to thank you, members of the Luray Town Council, for maintaining and keeping the Greenway going. It is truly a treasure, and we have done a good job taking care of it, and I look forward to even enhancing that and doing better in the future. Thank you all very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, very nice presentation, thank you. Next on the agenda, of course, is the Luray Page County. Gina is, I understand, is tied up with sports with her children this evening, and is not gonna be able to be with us, but she has enclosed a very nice report in our binder. All right, so our next item of business will be the public hearing in consideration. Item 8A, alley vacation request, 514 Luray Avenue.
Yes, sir. Final statement, request from Travis Hope of 514 Luray Avenue, requesting the town consider vacation of the alley, which is approximately 0.04 acres behind his property. Like many of the alleys within the Boomfield, the ownership is of the land is not clear, and what the town would be doing would be considering an ordinance of vacation that basically says that the town has no interest or claim of ownership of that alley.
All right, I'll open the public hearing for this request. Does anyone here want to speak? Mr. Burke, do we have anything, email, no other correspondence?
No, none of any concerns, no sir.
Okay, all right. Right, hearing nine, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Well, we heard about this last meeting, and I want to move that the town council adopts the ordinance of vacation regarding the 0.41 acres of the alley behind 514 Luray Avenue as presented.
Second. Danielle?
Ms. Lillard.
Yes.
Mr. Shiro.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke.
All right, yes, sir. First time on your normal agenda.
First item on your normal agenda is a proclamation of recognition for Debbie Dart. Whereas on January thirty first, twenty twenty, Debbie Dart retired from her position as Executive Director of Choices, the Council on Domestic Violence for Page County. And whereas Mrs. Dart has served as the only Executive Director of Choices since nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas Mrs. Dart has led her staff to help house, to help house, feed, protect, educate, and advocate for women and children living in fear in Page County. And whereas Mrs. Dart was instrumental in the rebuilding of the Choices facility after a fire in nineteen ninety-eight that allowed for increased capacity and accessibility. And whereas Mrs. Dart has expanded the services provided by Choices to include housing assistance, children's services, and community education and outreach. And whereas Mrs. Dart has overseen a program that has increased its service to the community by an average of twenty-nine percent each year of her service. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of town council of the town of Loray hereby recognize and heartily thank Debbie Dart on her dedicated service to Loray and Page County.
Mrs. Dart, we can only thank you. I didn't realize you were the only Executive Director. What a, what a, what an accomplishment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, certainly. Would you mind if I could?
I just want to thank you all for this proclamation. It means a lot to me. It really does, and I appreciate it so very much. And I just feel honored to have been able to serve as Executive Director for the almost twenty-four years that I was there. And it couldn't have been done, the growth, without support of the community and the towns and the county. And I'm just very, very appreciative. And I know that there's quite a few people in, just in this room that have helped support the agency over the years in a variety of ways. Helping with fundraising, helping with, I know you, Mr. Doffelmeyer, have, I think, with some building of construction in the courtyard and some other things with, which all is so very, very important to the agency and the growth, and also as board members. We've got a number of people who have served as board members, have or do serve now as board members, and that's very, very important. So I just really appreciate it. It means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you mind a photo op? Do we have our staff photographer? Is he ready to go?
A new title, I guess. We gotta have a photo shot with newspaper.
Should we make our motion first?
Yeah.
That's point order. I think it'd be pretty quick. I think it'd be.
Second.
Danielle?
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Look this way one time.
Should I wear your clear masks tonight?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Next item on your agenda is another proclamation recognizing Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed and was with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of town council of the town of Loray hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as Arbor Day in the town of Loray, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And at your seats, you'll find a little medallion that was provided by your Tree and Beautification Committee, recognizing the anticipated proclamation for Arbor Day. Unfortunately, we aren't planning due to COVID a typical Arbor Day event. But we do, we will be recognizing it with the annual planting of trees. And actually, Jennifer Jenkins has been working on a number of grant opportunities, so we'll have a number of trees that'll actually be planted along the northern end, I'm sorry, just north of Mechanic Street along the Hawksville Creek.
Right, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council approve the proclamation to celebrate Arbor Day as presented.
Second.
Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Steve, if you will pass along our thanks to the committee for these medallions. Very nice. All right, Steve, you're still up?
Yes, sir. Next item on your agenda, council's request to consider releasing twenty thousand dollars that was included in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget to fund the Loray Airport Terminal Building Design. The funding was frozen as part of our efforts to address potential revenue shortfalls associated with COVID-19. There is a letter from the airport authority requesting release of this funds.
Unless there are any comments, Mayor, I'll move that we approve the release of twenty thousand dollars in funding to the Loray Page County Airport Authority for the terminal building design that was included in the adopted twenty twenty-one town budget.
I'll second that.
Right, any discussion?
I'm just happy that we're able to do these things, that we're able to move forward on things that we had at the table for a while. So well done, staff, and even more so, well done, town of Loray, businesses, and just everyone.
Anybody else? All right, Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. The town was awarded four thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-two cents from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development as part of the state's COVID-19 municipal utility relief program. The town has developed an application program in compliance with the regulations established by the state. This program would allow our residents and businesses that have suffered economic hardship due to COVID-19 to apply for up to five hundred dollars in the grant funding to assist them in paying their water and sewer utility bills.
Steve, I do, I have a few questions. I was reading the, the supporting documentation that you provided, and I noticed that the expiration, the funds were supposed to be dispersed, it appears, by January thirty-first. Did I read that correctly?
You did.
And so has there been an extension on that, or?
They were dispersed to us. Unfortunately, we did not receive notification. The COVID-19 money was from the feds to the state, to the county. And unfortunately, we did not receive notification that the county had transferred funds to us until very recently. We believe that the, the funding, there's been no notification from the state that says that we can't continue dispersment of the program after those dates.
So we did not need to notify DHCD or any of those partners? Do we need a sentence?
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry. All of the notifications that were in there, yes, ma'am, we have, we have provided those to DHCD, and we are still in compliance with COVID.
Excellent. That's okay. Thank you. You answered my question.
Steve, when we do the first come, first served, I'm always concerned, how do we do, I mean, how do we let people know? And that everybody, that's fair that everybody hears it one time. That always concerns me.
Well, again, the, what we can do is rather than, we can set a date, you know, two or three weeks in advance so that we can put an ad in the paper. We can do our social media notifications. We had just planned to do social media and through this meeting. But if there's any additional communication that council feels would be appropriate, we can definitely work on that.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would, I would like to make that suggestion that we delay it for the purposes of at least having a print advertisement to the paper.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't really, yeah, that's a good, I don't really have the answer to this. I mean, do we put it on Facebook? And then the people who aren't on Facebook aren't gonna see it? Do we put it in the paper? And then the people who don't read the paper? Or, I mean, I, I don't know the, I don't know the best way to do this.
Could it be put in the utility bill? A notice in the utility bill that, of course, they're gonna, anyone that gets water is gonna get the notice.
Yeah.
And then we delay the, you know, give that time to be a response to that before we start determining what's first come, first served.
Are they cyclical, or they all go out at one time?
They all pretty much go out at one time.
Okay.
It's frankly difficult with a limited amount that we're talking about. And then the max that they can receive.
But as far as being fair, that's.
That is a fair way.
If we're looking at Facebook, or even the paper, you're still, it's a limited.
You're gonna miss somebody.
Right, you're gonna miss people that, that never knew.
At least one, and that's, that matters.
So the max is fifty dollars, right?
Five hundred.
Five hundred dollars.
Well, that, that, that is, you know, what we did because of the limited amount of money that was awarded to us, the forty-six hundred dollars.
So we're not people.
I hear what you're saying, but realistically, it's gonna be whoever grabs it first and sees it. I mean, there's no other, how else are you gonna do it?
The amount can be reduced if council desires, and it only can be applied to any delinquent amount between March and December.
Well, the question is, how many people are delinquent that would divide up that four thousand six hundred dollars? I mean, is it more people than, we got money for sure?
Yes.
I would imagine.
Yes, sir.
So if we made a lower amount, we'd get more people. Would that help the people that we're helping, I guess? That's the question.
Yes, sir. For the most part, I believe we've got, oh, God, I can't recall the amount that we're.
What's the average amount that people are behind? Is there one?
But it has to be attributed to COVID.
And that's the other problem.
That's the other problem. I mean, how do you?
Just because they're delinquent.
Just because, I mean, so maybe someone who's habitually been delinquent for years. You don't wanna give that person the opportunity to get funded if, if you have a person who, because had been, lost their job or whatever because of COVID. So it's, it's, like with a lot of this funding, it's, it sounds good, but it's hard to administer, and it's, it's hard to be fair with the way you administer it. But I, I think that's, Stephanie has a good idea. We hold at least till we can get it in the, in the newsprint. And, and, and the water bills too, I mean, that's easy to do.
Well, let me ask, and I'm still trying to figure this out. I mean, it's new to me as we discuss this. But we obviously have record of who's delinquent. If it was on, if the notices were simply put in to the bills that were, that go out to those that are delinquent versus social media or the newspaper, which gets, we may have people applying for that, that you still have to deal with the application and filter it out who don't qualify at all. So if they're not delinquent, why would we even send them a notice?
You wouldn't, but I'm saying if they were delinquent. So you would, ideally, you just send a notice to those who were not delinquent up until last year. I mean.
Or something like, or to that effect.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So ideally, that would, that would give you the.
So when the returns, when this starts to return, those responsible for filtering this out and to see who qualifies wouldn't have to deal with as much.
Many.
For those that apply that don't really understand that. They don't qualify.
That's right. That's, that's right.
Is that an option? Could you filter it to include it only in the invoices?
I think we could print a list.
I think what we wanted to do is just do a direct mailing to the individuals, because to select their, take good bills out in the billing cycle would be.
I agree.
And we're being fair. You know, we know there's a criteria. So we have record of who would even possibly fit that criteria. We don't already know if they do qualify.
Right.
But we would certainly have records to know who does not qualify.
Right, right. It would be time savings for the staff, certainly.
They're automated, yeah.
Right.
Do we have an idea, Mary, how many at this point are, are behind any, anybody?
I do have another question. So how do you verify the eligibility? So if they've been laid off, or what evidence would they, or is it just a certification?
As Vice Minister Shiro indicated, it's, I don't know that we're able to delve into. The way that the application is set up is that they're attesting to what they have documented is true and correct. So we're relying on the, the good nature of.
Well, also, they could be point of perjury if they said the wrong thing. They had, you know, we have, we have, they apply, and they say the wrong things, they could be, we could look it up and find out. So there's a fact.
Well, the, the other problem is, is that there's another qualifier that they can't have accepted certain other COVID-19 related funding. And, and again, we would not have access to any of their inconvenient to confirm that. So it, it is, we, we have to rely on those that applying to be telling us the truth in order for us to consider them in, in their application.
Well, it sounds like that if you consent a letter to the people that applies to, it wouldn't be that much expense. We don't know exactly how many, but fifty-five cents stamps in a letter seems a lot better than trying to just open up to the whole world and have all the, like you're saying, bogus people try to get money. I think it sounds good what we said.
But you do have to open it, don't you? I mean, you, you do have to make it public that.
I do think we have to make it public.
Public that people can apply. But, but then, then we can put some qualifiers in there. Then, and we, in-house, we can determine some eligibility just by our records too. Is, is it, is it worth considering a lesser amount than five hundred?
It can, if, if, if you'd like, we can research.
I mean, you, you could impact more people, yeah.
Date until after the communication goes out, we can consider.
Yeah, I'd like to see us help more.
Yeah, fifty's probably too low.
Get the full amount, right?
Two hundred or something, two fifty, I don't know, something that, yeah.
Get a lesser amount.
So Steve, just to, I, I think I'm reading it right. So when it says amount of assistance will not exceed amount outstanding that is thirty or more days past due as of application date, that means it can't fund anything that is less than thirty days past due. Is that what that means?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure I saw how I'm reading it. It can recover anything beyond that, past that, but nothing recent. Yes, okay.[1632.78] Is this something where?
Well, Joey, I, it says here utilities must prioritize assistance first to customers with accounts over sixty days in arrears and, and then once they've exhausted those, then it, it goes to anyone who has accounts thirty days in their arrears.
So we're creating something that could be administratively rather burdensome.
The devil's in the detail.
We're, we're willing to, to work through that. It, it, it is to the town's benefit to, if we're, if we're able to disperse those funds, that is money that would be realized to your utilities.
By all means, yeah, sure. I just wanna make sure we're not, as a council member, I don't wanna say, yeah, well, let's add this caveat or this and that, and now all of a sudden, our, our fine staff is.
Well, unfortunately, a lot of the, the requirements that you see there are actually required.
Sure, sure.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the town council adopt the town Luray's COVID nineteen municipal utility relief program as presented. I further authorize the town treasurer to administer the program and award utility credit in conformance with the plan requirements.
Second that.
All right, any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke? Oh, yeah, it's still you.
Um, next item for council's consideration is a code amendment to town code chapter eighty-two, sections forty-four, forty-five through fifty-four. This is all related to, uh, payment for vehicle license tax. The town no longer issues and requires display of a decal to verify approval of the vehicle tax payment. There are several changes through there. In addition, at your seats, uh, the town attorney identified in eighty-two dash fifty-four, the initial lead-in section, we recommend that also be deleted, uh, as indicated by the blue line, uh, as part of your consideration to add to the code amendments.
Are you ready for motion, Mary?
Yeah.
I move that the town council adopt the code amendments to chapter eighty-two, section forty-five to four, to fifty-four of the town code related to vehicle license and the punishment for enforcement as presented with the town attorney's amendments.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Next item for council's consideration is another code amendment to the town code chapter eighty-two, section sixteen, which is related to the trucks and carriers. This was, and I let me discuss that in your March fourth session, uh, to alleviate some of the issues as far as delivery of out-of-state, uh, vehicles that require permits issued by, uh, the state, the M V. And the town attorney has also identified a correction to eighty-two sixteen A four, uh, to modification to remove, to change from, to the police, uh, to the chief of police to, or from four to two, use of the street, as indicated by your, um, the, uh, change at your seats.
Uh, yeah. Council, have any questions for Mr., uh, for Jason?
I move that the town council adopt the code amendment to chapter eighty-two dash sixteen, related to the use of town street to deliver the oversized loads as presented. I further move that the town council adopt the revising zones in an application for site development as presented.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Next item for council's consideration, uh, is the transfer of ownership of our canine Cuba from the police department to Sergeant Nathan Dofflemeyer. Uh, due to some recent changes in the code of Virginia that de-trimulized marijuana and Cuba, Cuba's training that is in detecting marijuana, uh, his credibility in court has been compromised. Uh, staff would recommend council consider, uh, transferring ownership of Cuba to his handler, uh, as presented.
I move the town council approve the agreement to transfer ownership of Cuba from the town of Luray to Sergeant Nathan Dofflemeyer as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Good job, Cuba.
I would say, I would know that Nathan, uh, will take very good care and I had a really nice conversation with Bo the other day about this. I was kinda naive. I thought there's a switch on the dog. You could just switch off and say, just look for this. He's like, no, don't work that way. So I understand why this happened. I'm glad, I know Nathan has done a really wonderful job and Cuba has been very productive. Um, it's unfortunate that, you know, you can't have that switch, but it doesn't, so I know that we'll talk about maybe acquiring another one because I see, uh, methamphetamine and other things that we, uh, should keep a priority. Uh, so, uh, thanks, um, for Nathan for taking the dog and thank you Cuba for your service.
Yeah, absolutely. Did a great job.
Anybody else?
Sergeant Dofflemeyer and Cuba.
And I, we expect Bo to have another dog as quick as possible.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Daniel?
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Uh, next item for your consideration this evening is the budget advertisement for our FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Uh, councilman Pettit did identify, if we had, in our preparation of the, uh, advertisement that is in front of you, we had omitted some of the minor, uh, items in the real estate, personal property, meals and transient, transient occupancy taxes. Uh, there is a, an amended version at your desk. Basically, what, what staff is requesting is council's consideration as to what date, uh, council would like to conduct your, your public hearing, either May tenth or June fourteenth. Uh, council does not act on your budget at that meeting. You have to wait at least a week, uh, before you can act. Uh, the benefit of conducting.
I was consulting my calendar. I'm unsure what happened.
Your calendar talk.
As we all reach to turn hours off.
The, the benefit of conducting, uh, your public hearing on the May tenth, if there were any items that arose from the public that would warrant significant change, it does allow, uh, council and staff the time to, to do that. However, if council wanted to fully vet the, uh, budget before, uh, conducting a public hearing, it can be conducted at your June fourteenth meeting. Uh, and then if you conduct it at the tenth, you could, uh, consider the agenda at your June fourteenth meeting. If you have the public hearing at your June fourteenth meeting, we would conduct a special meeting at your June twenty-second work session.
Well, I think, um, if we, if, if we decide to hold a public hearing May tenth, council, other than, obviously, we can't, uh, increase any property taxes or anything like that, but council can still make amendments to the budget prior to its approval, e- even if it's initiated by council, not the public, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I mean, with that in mind, I, I don't have a problem with.
I don't, I don't see any problem at all.
Holding on May tenth, yeah.
It doesn't make it so it's in a hurry up to get to the deadline type thing. And I, I fully think this budget's gonna go with no tax increase, from what it seems like, from what I've read so far.
Well, we've, yeah, well, cause we've got, if you're talking about tax increase, you've got some deadlines we may have already missed.
All right, well, need a motion?
I move that the town council approves the public hearing advertisement for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two town budget for June, for May tenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second that.
All right, any more discussion?
Uh, I'd love, if possible, I'd love to get an Excel version of the budget if that's already there. Might, uh, get in there and nitpick a little bit, so, yeah, thanks. I appreciate it.
That'd be great.
Figured it was speaking.
Anybody else? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Jason, we thank you for finding that there.
Yeah. Eagle Island.
All right, Mr. Burke, you're still up, I guess.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, council had requested an opportunity to start discussion of your FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Um, staff has, uh, identified tonight as being discussion of your water and sewer fund discussion. Uh, in preparation of the agenda, we did discover that fourteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars of the water treatment operations expenses had been, uh, had not been invested into your presented budget. Um, they are reflected in, uh, in the items tonight will be reflected in, in the budget as far as the, uh, public hearing and the advertisement. Uh, we had, with the six percent increase in water revenue that we had proposed, uh, there's always, um, funding that could be realized that we don't incorporate into the anticipated revenue just because whenever there's a utility rate, sometimes some folks cut back and conserve, and so we don't always realize the full amount. Um, and so the, the six percent, I believe it was about twenty thousand dollars in revenue that we had omitted, uh, basically the, the buffer. Um, so there is no, with, with the fourteen thousand that we identified that had not been included in the budget previously presented to you, uh, we aren't, uh, we aren't suggesting any additional adjustment in the rates. It just reduces our amount of, of give, if you will, of the, once the, uh, six percent would be considered and enacted, uh, we're hoping that there won't be as great a decrease in the amount of consumption in, in our water.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Steve, you still?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Should we just kinda walk through it? How, how would you like, I mean?
As the council desires, uh, the first page is just the revenues. Uh, again, both water and sewer revenues are primarily based upon, uh, the, the charges that we charge for both water and sewer, uh, consumption. If there's any questions as to revenue.
So where the, the, exactly where is the, the short?
But in the, uh, in the consumer sales of water.
Mm-hmm.
We had originally, uh, only indicated approximately one point three eight four, eight, eight six.
Mm-hmm.
Is the, uh, income revenue.
Mm-hmm.
But we adjusted that number to, to the fourteen thousand that had been omitted. Um, effectively, what, what, when we produced the six percent increase, it gave us a set amount, but we took back some of that, recognizing that whenever there's a utility increase, people don't try to conserve water, and so there's, you don't always realize the full assessment of that six percent.
Okay.
We try to be conservative, I guess, in predicting.
Yeah, no, that's, that's smart, yeah.
I guess.
Uh, uh, Steve, so that's where, is that where the one seventy-two, one oh five comes from on the, on the water fund revenues is anticipated increase?
Yeah.
Is, is that what that is?
Oh.
Right there.
Oh, okay, you're, you're correct. Uh, the proceeds for indebtedness, if you add up the twenty, uh, twenty-two hundred sixty-six increase in the facility fees, the nineteen thousand in the water sales, and I apologize, the hundred and fifty didn't get printed under proceeds from indebtedness. That, that was the loan that we're taking out.
Okay.
For the, uh, capital improvements at the plant. So those items sum total would be the one seventy-two. The two thousand plus nineteen plus one fifty would give you the one hundred and seventy fifteen.
That makes better sense, Steve.
I didn't know I was pointing that out, but okay. I was just kidding.
Nice job, Mike.
Um, on, on the water and sewer, what is our, I mean, I know I looked at the budget, but where are we roughly? We run just a, a little bit in the, in, in the, in the black on that?
Yes, sir. Yes, we're not making a lot of money.
Right, but we're, we're covering our, our debt and making a, a, a little bit.
Yes, sir.
And with those, you know, I know every year we, part of the salary, I mean, sort of the rate study we did many years ago, we sat here, if you remember when, when the gentleman came in and it was really a good, you know, he used to get kinda glazed over when I started hearing about water and sewer rates and this, but he did a really good job explaining why we increment, incrementally, uh, raise it every year, so, um.
Unfortunately, I don't know that, and Joey can attest this, I don't know that there's been a year that the cost of chemicals for treatment has, has not increased by a little bit, and that's why we typically would present you with one percentage.
Right, right, right.
You have a finite customer base. It doesn't change that much, and the cost goes up every year to, to produce the water. It's, it's not, so, let's hope some of these new developments come through and we can stabilize the.
Spread well.
But, yeah.
And if we were to, um, I know you had put on the, the funding that might be coming soon for the American Recovery Plan, uh, to, to pay some of the debt off on this, I mean, would, would that change the rate structure at all if we weren't carrying as, as much debt?
Yes, sir. If we were to reduce the debt, yes, sir. Um, that would definitely allow us to.
Right.
To consider a rate reduction or a huge amount of increase for, for zero.
And I can just tell you, from my own personal experience on the other side of the mountain, we're having water and sewer conversations, and they're a lot more depressing than this. And I always use Luray as an example of a utility system that, you know, it's got some age, like all do, but it really has been well managed and well thought, thought out for a long time, and it's, uh, again, something that citizens don't so already think about, but that goes to everybody in here and everyone who's worked on this over the years, different councils and mayors and everyone, so it's really something that the town can be proud of, that they have really kept themselves, um, uh, in a good, uh, good, good service and people like yourself, Joey, um, and with a, really well thought out, so I appreciate all the work that's been done on that over the years. Even the folks that are up here have been up here for a while too.
Steve, can I ask a general question about the, over the years, we've talked about changing our meters, um, the, the oldest ones or the, or the poorest functioning ones first, and how's all that going? Or will there ever be a time when all the meters are, are like, there will never be a time when everything's repaired?
Well.
Cause they keep wearing out, right?
That they, like anything, they get old and, and we do try to replace them, and they're fairly expensive. They're anywhere from six to ten thousand, depending on the size.
No, but the, the goal was that we replace them on a regular basis as they have time to do it and we have money to buy them.
Yes.
But is all the big offenders being taken care of first is what I remember being told.
Primarily the larger meters are the ones that you need to, uh.
Yeah, I don't wanna hurry it up and make my meter exposed and turned over, but I mean, when's it gonna come a point where?
You don't want a new meter, I'll tell you that.
So, but the question is, is that, that's the ongoing project.
Get out there tomorrow.
Yes, sir. It is, it, 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 like, like all personal infrastructure, yes, sir, there's a continuous need to, to replace.
Well, there was that and there was, uh, I guess stormwater leakage and some of the, that might be the, the sewer for fund maybe, but how's our infrastructure doing right now? Are we in poor shape? Are we in good shape? What's the deal here?
Fair shape. Uh, right now, uh, Lynn and, and Joey are having to track down a, a water leak. Uh, we, a fairly sizable water leak. We're probably losing a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand gallons a day right now, and we've been chasing down at least half a dozen locations.
We tested two different locations today.
Yeah. Uh, and what we're looking for, it basically, it's not a good thing to look for in the middle of the wet season, but what you're looking for is just areas where there's a lot of standing water and then.
That shouldn't be there.
That shouldn't be there. Uh, we, we, we go out and, and test for chlorine and, and fluoride residuals. If, if they're present, that tends to, uh, that indicates that they are, um, most likely a water leak, although one that we did find had a, had a fairly high fluoride, uh, concentration.
Okay, well, there was, there was something to do with cameras that we were using to inspect major lines or something.
That's in our sewer system.
That's okay. Is, and that's a still ongoing process or is that something we can't afford anymore?
Well, we, we did a lot of that last year. We weren't able to fund it in this budget.
Okay.
But that is one of the items that we would propose, uh, for council to consider through the American Rescue Plan.
Okay, that's what I need to hear.
What's our loss ratio now?
Oh, with that is.
Um, when we started, golly, what was it?
It was pretty high at one time, I know.
Five years ago, we were at sixty-four percent.
Yeah.
Um, working with Lynn, Tom at the wastewater plant, Danielle here in the office, um, with all the numbers that we collect, leaks and everything, I think last year we were at twenty-six.
Oh, that's, that's great. Yeah, any.
The average is about twenty-four percent.
That's great.
So we're down, we're down to twenty-six.
Any, cause, uh, anything under thirty percent's good.
Seems crazy, doesn't it?
Yeah, but it's true.
Really does.
When you think about the distribution system, it, it makes sense.
So many.
Yeah, that's, that's a good job, yeah.
I never knew that.
Was that, uh, one ever on reservoir? I guess that's the reservoir.
Yeah. Right on Eden?
Right, yeah, is that all straightened up now?
We tested it and it had fluoride. So what I did was we tested at Height, then we tested Hudson, and we tested at the, uh, raw water plant, and we have about one point two residual on natural current fluoride in the town's water, and I think a lot of that has to do with limestone. So when we did test at Eden, we had about a point one six fluoride, but core was zero, so we pretty much came to the conclusion that it was not a town.
Huh.
And then we tested today at Height Spring. We walked the field all the way up to Wallace Avenue. We found some water laying. We tested it and it was nothing, so.
That was a lot of water. I thought for sure that was gonna come back.
That happens when you're a cave town.
Yeah, I guess so.
So, yeah.
And that's the, that's the problem I think we're finding is there's so many unknown caves in the ground that if there is a leak, it could be going down and it's not built up, so. We have to find it, yeah.
How do you, I mean, if you, if we don't wanna walk through the whole thing, if we just got questions, I mean, that might be a more time-efficient way of, of doing it. Uh, I, I'd look through, I mean, I, I only had a couple things and I did not really. I, I'd look through, I mean, I, I only had a couple things and I did not really, I, I guess, I'm, I'm just, I'm questioning, I'm not, it's not a question, it's just I'm curious as to, um, under your, under the water operations, I noticed the materials and supplies. And Mary, I, this, it's great having the audited numbers, you know, that's a, that's a big help, it gives you some kind of benchmark. We're at forty, we're at forty thou, I mean, forty thousand, that's, that, that sounds good. But the other one I had was under repair parts, under water plant operations. That was seventeen thousand, and it jumped to, your audited numbers were sixty-two thousand. We budgeted thirty-five thousand, and you're, you're proposing fifty-four thousand this year, which is about a twenty thousand dollar increase. And we're right, as of year to date, we're at right around twenty-two thousand in expenses. And I'm just wondering what, what you, is there something that you anticipate that's gonna drop that up? Because I mean, we're, we're at seventy-five percent of the budget spent right now.
I think part of that is the pump replacement.
Part of that is our finished water pumps we put in in ninety-seven.
Uh huh.
So they are about, we rebuilt them, usually the lights in those pumps, you can put a rotating assembly in those things about three times, and I think we've put them in about five times. They, and before they were, they were brass, they have come out with stainless steel, which is about sixteen thousand for a rotating assembly. But we've gotten a little bit more life out of them, we just replaced one last week. So they do get a little bit more life, but we're anticipating need to replace.
Okay.
And the motors, you can have about a ten-year lifespan and, and they did get, I think, in two thousand nine, they did put new motors on those because they weren't VFD compatible. So they did get new motors, but those are taken out very quickly also.
Okay, now that makes sense. And then skipping over to, well, we're not, we're still on water, forget about it. I, I had a couple questions in sewer, too, if you want to go ahead. Sewer, under sewer plant operations, your, again, repair parts. We had a, we had audited numbers at eighteen thousand, we had a budget last year of seventy thousand, and you're again budgeted seventy thousand this year, and I think we're at around twenty-four thousand right now, year-to-date expenditures. Again, I'm just questioning, is there something that's, that's out there that's, that's, you're thinking it needs to stay that high?
I, you know, I wish Tom or Todd were.
Yeah, you, you can, you can check and get back, you, you don't have to. I'm sure there's a good reason, a good, good reason.
And I think what it simply may have been was that some of the work that we had planned in the FY twenty twenty-one, we've not been able to proceed with because we're having to bid out the installation of the influence screening device. I think some of that seventy thousand was associated with some peripheral work that would be necessary with that, but I can confirm that.
Okay, just get back, let me, it's, it's, it's another figure. And of course, travel and training's way off, but I'm sure that's because of COVID and. Those are the only things that jumped out at me, that's.
Well, let me ask another general question. Last year, we talked a lot about the sewage haulers and the improvements we was gonna make. That all turned out, so we now have a lock gate at a certain hour, so they can't come in the middle of the night, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, how's all that working? Are all the people still pretty much using us like they have been?
No, sir.
They've dropped off?
They've dropped off, and it, it was less expensive for them to haul to either front or.
It's not like we needed that revenue anyhow, I guess.
No, sir, and, and this budget reflects, and the revenues.
We were getting sewage from all the pla, all those plants.
Yes, sir. Oh, the sewer surcharges, the hundred and seventy-five, that was the revenue that we realized from haul floods, and we have reduced that to basically just ten thousand. So we are able to sustain our sewer fund without.
Okay. But it's a lot better system right now, I understand it. You know, it's not like you're guessing or taking somebody on or for what they got in the truck.
Our operators find that it is much more stable. Whenever you release a slug of sewage into the system, it really does change the way that the system has to be manipulated to obtain the treatment necessary to comply with the.
So all the changes we made last year has been for the better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I wanted to.
Well, that was kind of a test to see if we wanted to invest in the million or million-plus equipment to better handle that. If, and we raised the rates, would they stay with us or leave? And they left, and we didn't have to spend an extra million or whatever, was it a million or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Whatever that figure was, so I think that worked out well.
It did.
Well, it looks to me like we're in good shape in, in the budget overall for the water and sewage. It makes sense.
Yes, sir, there were, again, there were a few items that we weren't able to, to include in, in the proposed budget, but we, we would hope to be able to discuss with council, the American Rescue Fund. I know Joey's identified a number of other projects that we hadn't considered within the FY twenty-two budget, but there are things that, again, as our system is aging, we do need to consider. And if there is the ability to upfront that money, it will benefit our, our customers down the road.
Well, since you're here, Joey, what's the top things you want to include that's not there yet? I mean, I don't want to butcher the spot, but I did.
One of the number one items is the reservoir cover there. That is a.
Is it the one there is not very good, or what?
Well, it's, it was put in in nineteen eighty-five.
Good gosh.
So it's old.
You wanna put Lake Hurrah in there?
Morning Star.
I wouldn't.
Years ago, a company came in, they, they dove under, they plugged all the holes they could. By OSHA law, we're supposed to have two entrances into that reservoir, we only have one. So I have gotten a new price on it, and they would come in and it, the, the top cover's bolted. Of course, the bottom, the bottom half is a bladder.
Right.
So the top half's bolted, so they would come in and replace all of that, and, so that definitely needs to be redone. And then like I said, the finished water pumps and motors need to be replaced. Right now, we have vertical, and it's not a lot of room in that building. We've got about two and a half feet between both pumps and motors to work, and the rotating assembly is about a foot wide, so we don't have a lot of room to work with those. So I have gotten prices on new motors and pumps that will be horizontal, that will lay, and just like we have on West Main. So when we have to replace the rotating assembly of those, we can go right in, unbolt the cover, lift them out, and put them right back in. The crane that we have in the finished water building only lifts the motor about six inches, just enough to remove the volute dome to, to repair it. So that change will really help out that system and, and give us new equipment and whatnot. But, and then like I said, VFDs have really saved us a lot with.
Remember that's happened.
And the raw water building is the only building in the system that doesn't have VFDs, so I've gotten prices on new VFDs and whatnot for all of our water.
Your wishlist is getting longer here, sir.
Well, I think there's some intentionality here, right, that in, in anticipation of the.
Yes.
Now the name just gave me, American, what is it, Rescue Plan, yeah. So there's a lot of capex, or capital improvements that have been kind of pared back, and also debt servicing, too, right?
Well, we're hearing it now, makes it easier for me to understand which one to prioritize when we get down to deciding.
Along those lines, if, if any members of council would ever like to tour you to the water plant or wastewater plant, just let us know, and we'd love to be able to let you see what, what, what Joey and, and Tom talked about or report on in their, their weekly reports. The, just to, to give you a scale of, of the reservoir, it's a five million gallon.
Yeah, five, five point four million, uh, finished water.
And it's about three football fields? Yeah, so it, it's a, it's an enormous structure. So when, when Joey says we're thinking of, have, we need to replace the cover, I mean, it's not like we could just run out to Walmart.
Right.
Like a pool cover.
Typical pool cover.
I just get a big one. No, I think that'd be a great idea. In fact, we've talked about, you know, a lot of these things that we hear about, I, I have no idea what we're talking about. So if we could get a tour of those facilities, and I've always wanted to see the reservoir, I mean, I haven't seen it.
See, I guess I don't really understand.
Since when was it eighty? When did, when did we do it?
Of course, that reservoir is.
That reservoir.
Cover last time.
Is that what keeps the pressure on it down?
The one they dug out, oh.
Uh.
Driven by.
Uh, what the? Do the redo the. We used to take oil up there, you know, do those people work up there.
We put a gravity on it.
So it's our reservoir backup for when everything goes bad? Got it.
It's all gravity, it's, it's all gravity, so.
Well, let's try to put that together, I mean, I'm assuming that, I know some of you actually work.
Yeah, we could do it on a weekend.
Like a, I don't know, a five o'clock, would that, Joey, would you be able, possible to stay one?
Weekends, whatever time, I'm, I'm good, so just let me know.
I mean, we don't have to pick a date now, but what would suit everybody best, or, I think of that to the work session.
Yeah, sure.
We'll try to pick a date.
Yeah, it, it's better to go see it one time.
Oh, yeah, I think we'd understand a lot more about.
Schedule it as a work session.
We could.
Yeah, Mary, we could just meet out there.
I don't know, we could now, can't we? With, if, we'd have to have our, our continuity in government, wouldn't we? How would we do that?
After what?
The continuity in government, we'd have to.
Just stuff.
Well, we, we can let Steve do this smartphone like he used to do.
Well, the public can.
It's kind of like a retreat, we don't have to broadcast.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, all right, Steve, last thing, I guess, Lu Ray Meadows?
Yes, sir. We've actually made some, some great strides. Jason has finalized all of the documents associated with that. We have actually gotten to the point that we're getting signatures. The notice to proceed will be dated the fourteenth, from what I understand. And so Derek should be turning quite soon out of the Meadows project, so. That's exciting. That has actually, it appears to be coming to, to, to a head at this time start.
Well, this is a long time coming, isn't it, like, third go around to get?
Started in fifteen, I remember.
It was a, it's been a while.
Fourteen, fourteen or fifteen is when they came.
So it sounds like it's really gonna happen this time.
Well, and a lot of it, I, I can't say enough for, for Jason's assistance in getting through the documents, Brian's assistance in getting through a lot of the headbanging with not only people, but DHCD. It's, it's, it's challenging. And then Mary and Danielle for putting up with us for trying to do all of the, the billing associated. And unfortunately, going forward, Mary and Danielle will have to deal with a lot of the, the invoicing, and then we have to, anyway, it's, it's more challenging than just writing a check because Brian will get an invoice from, well, actually, no, Brian won't get it. Pino will send an invoice to Racy, Racy will send it to Brian, Brian will, will give it to Danielle and Mary. Then we'll forward that to the regional commission, it'll get uploaded to DHCD, and then hopefully will be reimbursed within thirty days. So there's, there's a lot going on to make this project happen even after it starts. And so there's a number of people in this room that, while we're excited that the project is going, there will be a lot of hair pulling and headaches, but it is a good thing for the community.
All right, thank you, Steve. All right. Mr. Botkin, you have anything?
I don't have anything tonight, dear, thank you.
Joey, thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Yeah, Joey, thank you very much, thank you for what you do for us. Any council comments?
I don't want to prolong this too much, but at the regional meeting they talked about last year of doing a study on recycling, when we were all worried about it back then, when things weren't happening. I believe the region spent fifty thousand dollars of money they had through, you know, the same type funding, so they didn't have to spend more money, but the engineers came back saying, hmm, there's not much we can do. Things are what they are. I guess I'm not satisfied with the fact that we can't do anything. I want us to keep working at, even if we don't make a profit, how we can get town cardboard, plastic, aluminum, whatever, in a recycling system, just to be a good steward of the earth, as opposed to just saying, we can't do it. Because when that stopped, my wife got on my back big time, yeah. That's the main reason I'm talking here. We need to get recycling picked back up as soon as possible.
Well, and the chief's not here, we would hope to restore recycling as soon as the inmates are available.
It's the sheriff holding us up.
Well, it's COVID, it's all still COVID related. And we hope that that will get to the point that we can resume.
See, I was under the impression that the county had a contract for plastic, they bailed their plastic, and they actually sell it and get something for it. And I don't know if that's still going or not, but cardboard has been recycled, it's picked up, and that's, hopefully, either pays for itself. It's the, the glass is crushed and stays here, but anything we do to, to not just keep filling a hole up is, I'm in favor of.
Well, and, and not to put you in bed with Laney, but you can still take your recycling to.
You can take it down.
I have been taking it to, every, every week.
I'm sure you have.
I stop my way home, you know, put it there. It just, it's an inconvenience on my part, is what I'm saying. The whole town would like it if we started again.
Yes, sir, and like I said, our plan would be to resume that just as soon as.
Well, I've been hearing this for a while now.
And, and you'll continue to hear that so long as there is a, a threat of COVID that, and unfortunately, I completely understand where the sheriff is coming from.
Okay.
Is that if you get one individual in those, that, that tight quarters, it spreads, and then the responsibility for treating them is on, on the county, and that's a, a serious expense. So I can understand their, their hesitation in, in letting in anyone.
I thought we did a long time ago without any inmate help. I thought we had a part, that we always had inmate help?
It was inmates from the beginning, I, I recall.
I knew we had an employee that, that, you know, drove the trailer.
Just drove the truck, but all the.
All the help, the pickup.
The help, the hands on, yeah, that was in my head.
So it's gonna be until COVID goes away then, that's what I can tell her.
Yes, sir.
You want us to talk?
Anything you want, you want to call in?
I'm gonna give you a note. All right, any other council comments?
No, well, that's a good one.
You know, Mayor's comments, I really don't have much. I think things are just encouraged, I think the town just seems more alive in the last six months than I've ever seen it. It's just amazing. I think the last four weeks, I've been to three ribbon cuttings. We don't have one this week, do we, Steve? Or Steve has a calendar, I think there is one the following week, the Vesuvio.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's next Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
And I think there's one after that, then, isn't there?
Yes.
Okay, so.
There's a lot of people in town, the last two weeks.
Oh, it's, oh, well, it's just, I mean.
It's been crazy.
That's a good thing, though, right?
I was wondering.
Oh, I think it's, yeah. Bill, we thank you for what you do for LDI, we certainly appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, that's all I have. Meeting is adjourned.